Good morning, welcome to City Hall on this cold and icy Valentine's Day. This morning, we are going to have our invocation brought to us by Sabi Singh, who is a member of the Interfaith Alliance of Oklahoma City, whose aim is to encourage compassion, civility, and mutual respect for human dignity in an ever-diverse society. Following that, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd like to ask Councilman Ed Shadid to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would please stand.
Please bow your heads. We thank you, O Lord, who are the Creator and Sustainer of this universe, for all you have done for our city and our leaders in City Hall. As they meet to conduct and deliberate over this week's business, we ask for your blessing that they may carry out their duties with wisdom, compassion, and strength. Always keeping in mind the welfare of the inhabitants of the city who have entrusted this authority to them. We behold with gratitude the striking progress that our city has made in recent years on several fronts. We acknowledge with humility that much progress needs to be made in the future. Bestow the gifts of goodwill, vision, and perseverance on our city so that we may accomplish this process, keeping in mind the needs of the weakest and neediest amongst us. Amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All righty, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Items three, A through D are a series of appointments. Second? Cast your votes. All in favor? Thank you very much. Item four, A, is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for February 7th, 2012, and item B, to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for January 24th and the 31st. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor? The motion passes unanimously. Item five, manager, is the request for uncontested continuances.
Madam Vice Mayor, I have several this morning, starting on item eight, G1, unsecured items. Item, page 13, item B, 1736 East Euclid. We ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Item D, 3715 North Hartford Street. We ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. On to page 14. Item K, 1719 Northwest 2nd Street. We ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item N, 1710 Southwest 15th Street. We ask that that be stricken. It's now occupied. Item O, 2264 Northeast 16th Street. Or in 16th Terrace. We ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item Q, 1104 Northeast 19th Street. We ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item S, 4400 Northwest 20th Street. We ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item U, 2112 Northwest 22nd Street. We ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item Y, 3720 Southeast 51st Street. We ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And then, under Claims for Denial on page 15, under item eight, L1F. Page 15, eight, L1F, John Hester. He has requested a two-week deferral on this item, and that will be put back on the February 28th council agenda.
Great. Thank you very much. City Manager. At this point, we're going to go ahead and recess the council meeting, and we'll convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. We have three items. Second? Motion and a second?
Your Honor, I have a question on A. A is the lease of a parking lot. And is there any way that the city can exercise some control over the future of that lot, other than through the lease obligations? Do we have a right of first refusal, the right to purchase it, under the lease?
I don't believe so. I think, you know, it's an urban rental lot, and...
So if urban rental decides they want to develop a lot, or had a developer approach them, we could... We face the possibility of losing access to that lot or use of that lot?
Well, I think that's a potential... It's a low potential for doing that. I think if it was to be redeveloped, it would be redeveloped in some type of mixed use with parking.
I hope you're right. But I think it would really be hurtful to the city's processes to lose access to that parking lot.
I don't think it's... Urban rentals deserve to do so at all.
Thank you.
Thank you. And before we vote on the OCPPA, we do have a presentation on item C from our Golf Commission. And while you're coming forward, I would like to recognize Angela Monson is here this morning. And Angela, as soon as we complete this part of the docket, I'll have you come forward and make your presentation. Thank you.
Mayor, Council, I'm Rob Lewis from the Parks Department. And while we're letting the computer wind up here, the fee increase... I have some information on the fee increase for the golf courses. And the proposed fee increases are only for Lake Hafner, Lincoln, Trossler, and Early Wining Park Golf Courses. We listed the major fees in this, and the Oklahoma City Golf Commission has reviewed the golf system operations for the last previous years. And the following increases for 2012 and 2013 are designed to assist the golf system in three areas. These areas are operational costs, equipment purchases, and capital maintenance. The capital maintenance is in preparation for the replacement or renovation of the Lincoln clubhouse. The last fee increase for operations was $2 in 2008 and $1 in 2009. The revenue is estimated for 12 months using last fiscal year actual rounds. The new walking fee sales to date have been added to the fiscal year 2011 rounds to get an idea of what those rounds will have as effect on our revenue. The total rounds' sales are estimated at 246,307. In 2010, rounds were 231,660, and in 2011, rounds were 235,158. The green fees changes for 2012 in the upper-left corner are to support capital maintenance. Golf cart fee increases for 2012 are to provide operational costs. Green fee increases for 2013 are also to help operational costs. And then, the increase in cart fees in 2013 is to be placed in the Golf System Equipment Fund for equipment purchases. The Equipment Fund was established 14 years ago, and that fee has not been increased over that time. Range tokens for 2012 and 2013 will also be used for operational costs. The Golf Commission provides a way to reduce the cost of golf through purchases of advances books for frequent player and tour of the city. Are there any questions?
Your Honor, I have a question. You say, Rob, you say, "operational expenses." Are there any personnel costs in that?
It'll be personnel, yes. It'll be any operational costs, not including capital purchases.
Anybody else have any questions?
Should recognize that the Golf Commission Chairman, Mike Cast, is here, along with long-term, longtime Commission Member Leroy Richardson, now the godfather of the Golf Commission now, and then Golf Pro Dean Dan Langford is with him this morning.
Thank you all for being here this morning. Hearing no questions, I believe we had a motion and a second. Are we ready to cast our votes? Motion's passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Now, under items from the City Manager's office, we had a presentation by Chairman of the School Board of Education, Angela Monson. And if it's all right with the council, I'd like to move that item forward. Why don't you come on up, Angela? Happy Valentine's Day. I like your red.
I carry it too. There's two. Good morning, everyone. I came in, I thought, "You guys were all into your business." I thought, "I was only eight minutes late." You know, golly gee, you guys are quite effective. And I pulled the agenda, and I didn't see me. I thought, "Maybe I have the wrong day." But thank you very much, Madam Vice Mayor. Good morning, everyone. It's always a pleasure to be with you. This is an exciting time in Oklahoma City on all fronts. It's a time of challenge, but also a time of great opportunity. Just pleased to be with you as the mayor continues to invite me periodically to come and update about some of the activities occurring in Oklahoma City Public Schools. And I want to talk about those specifically in partnership with the City of Oklahoma City. And just be really, really brief, because your trusty, trusty staff, Debbie Martin and Galen from the mayor's office, and our staff at Oklahoma City Public Schools are trying to find the right date for us to have, again, our annual, we're not sure, it's just a little beyond a year, City Council School Board Retreat sort of meeting. And it was that meeting last year that resulted in a task force between several of your council members and several of our board members. We do meet monthly, and those activities, Patrick Ryan, Pete White are your representatives, Lynn Watson and myself serve representing the school board. Those meetings have proven to be very productive. Our staff, your staff, have been engaged, working hard together to find common areas of interest and support. I'd like to just mention a few. You'll hear more report once we can finalize this joint meeting. You'll hear more detail about these things. But the district's initiative to begin high school choice, open choice, promoting career opportunities for our students, our National Academy Foundation Initiative, our themed Career Academies is well underway. The City of Oklahoma City has been extraordinarily helpful in moving that initiative forward and identifying members of your staff who work on our advisory boards to help engage more community participation, to make sure that the curriculum is relevant to what's going on in today's workforce. Your human resources leader, Diane, has been very, very helpful. And I think every one of our five, now six, Career Academy Advisory Boards have representatives from the City of Oklahoma City participating. In addition, they've worked hard to try to determine ways that we can use more city employees as mentors in our schools. I think we will start with individuals like you and salaried employees who can take a little time off and come into our schools and help our students. So that's very important. We're trying to identify a school or two, target and pilot some activities that might look a little different from our normal mentoring program. Same with our after-school initiatives. We worked about utilization of facilities, both our buildings and maybe some of the park and recreation facilities, how we can expand that optimum time after school to help encourage our kids to be engaged in positive, energizing activities, whether it be a physical activity, whether it be science projects, whether it be music or dance, or whatever areas of interest that these students have. But we've been working continuously to try to figure out how we can best use facilities, time, and energy, and expertise in those areas. Transportation is critical. As I mentioned, the academy just a moment ago. If we go to, which we have proposed, which we have planned, which we are preparing for, high schools of choice based on career interests among our students, we have to move students around all across the city. Transportation is a difficult issue, both for the district and the City of Oklahoma City. And I just really want to applaud our transportation leader, your transportation leader. I think they are coming up with some great ideas that will not only help move our students where they need to be, but as I think someone said in the meeting, grow up a generation of individuals who believe that public transportation is okay. Get them used to riding those buses, and it'll help bolster the services that you offer, and we can provide some customers to you. And lastly, I want to mention this whole notion of internal audits. How do you make sure that what you do is most efficient and effective? You guys have developed a system, and we are learning from that process and are moving now to employ our own internal auditor, to work jointly with you, to learn from you, to do things with you, to ensure that our services, our work, is the most efficient that we can possibly provide. Lastly, we are moving to create a task force on technology. We know that our kids, you know, I have a problem. I almost can call my five-year-old grandson to help me resolve my technology problems. Generally, I call my 17-year-old daughter, who can resolve all kinds of issues. But we know that the utilization of technology in our buildings, if I can use this phrase as my kid says, sucks. So we're moving quickly to create a task force. And I think a couple of your employees will join us on that task force to enhance. We have some resources available through E-Rate, so we want to make sure distance-learning opportunities are available to our students so we can offer more classes and opportunities for our students. The last, really, the last thing unrelated to the task force that I do want to mention is really our biggest challenge today, this day, and our biggest opportunity. Most of you have heard on national news, as well as local news, that the State Department of Education has been granted a waiver from what we generally call our "No Child Left Behind" law. That waiver is... Has been conditionally granted, but we all are fairly, you know, secure and believe that that final waiver granting will be extended to us from the U.S. Department of Ed. It gives lots of flexibility to the State Department of Education and expenditure of title. One money, other federal dollars. Great opportunities to the State Department of Education to do some things differently. The challenge is to make sure that we, as a local district, and all of the local districts across the state also have those same opportunities for flexibility. There's a provision in the waiver that reads simply, and I'm reading exactly from the waiver. "Local education agencies with identified priority schools will be required to implement the turnaround principles as defined in the Elementary-Secondary Education Act waiver package. Local education agencies that are unable to demonstrate capacity to do so will relinquish control of all aspects of a priority school's operation that directly or indirectly relate to student achievement to the state education agency." That simply means the documents that we have to submit on tomorrow to the State Department of Education, if deemed unacceptable, if deemed that we are unable to demonstrate the capacity to really turn around some 1719 priority schools as identified by the State Department of Education, then we are subject to have all control taken away from us. That's a big challenge for this district. That's a big challenge for districts all across the state. And unfortunately, although we have a template to fill in the blanks to produce our capacity documentation, we do not know exactly what is demonstration of capacity. We don't know exactly how we're going to be measured. We don't know exactly... We've been given some ideas. I like extending the date, which we have done, extending the school year, trying to find after-school activities and partnerships. So we think we have everything right. We hope that we do. We know we have great challenges. And I tell you, the last four weeks, our school board has worked diligently with our superintendent to identify measurable outcomes for student achievement. Most of those areas, we have, over the next 18 months, proposed as much as 30% increases in academic performance among our students. That's a hard row to hold, in essence, given the state of affairs in our school district. But we know that our students can perform. We have great expectations that they will perform. We will hold accountable from the board superintendent all the way down. But most importantly, we want to encourage teachers, all the way up, to identify the kinds of things that they know our students need that will work. And our biggest challenge right now is to make sure that our State Department of Education will truly be a partner with us to allow that to happen. So I just wanted to say that, just in case we're back saying we need your help, we want to continue this partnership that we've established with our city council and our city leaders to make sure that all of our schools can be the kind of schools that we envision for our students. So always thank you for this opportunity. I look forward to our next joint meeting. Pat and Pete, it's always good to be with you at our monthly task force meetings. Be happy if you have a moment to answer any questions or respond to anything.
Thank you. Comments, questions?
Let me make a comment. With the hard work of the chairman and superintendent of schools, Oklahoma City School District has come a lot further than most people give it credit for. And I think one of the issues that I've talked about at our joint meetings is the fact that they need to have a better PR program to make people aware of the significant improvements that have been made in Oklahoma City schools. The perception is strong in our community that it's not a good school district, a failed school district. And the truth is a long ways from that. It's a much better school system than they get credit for. They've got excellent leadership, really enthusiastic people, willing to make changes, to do things differently. And I think they need to get a lot more credit. They deserve it, and they need to get it. Thank you, Angela.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Ryan.
Other comments?
I'd just like to add one thing about the task force. It, for me, it's one of the most rewarding things I participate in. We meet monthly, we brainstorm ideas, and get reports on ideas that we've thrown out the month before. And the commitment on part of the board and on the part of Chairman Monson, I think, is commendable because the superintendent, Springer, said that in all his years in education, he has never been in a situation where a city sat down with the school board and did what we're doing. He's never heard of it. At least, he's never heard of it in Oklahoma. Probably, there are other cities where the cities manage the school board where it may be a more regular function. But he said he's never been in a situation where a city actually participated the way that we're doing it. And it's very rewarding to do it. And the comment you made earlier about a city employee, now at least one, I suspect, but in many cases, more than one, are serving on this kind of a board of directors for each one of these academies. That's not what you call them.
Well, that's advisory boards, but in essence, that's kind of how they act.
Right. And, you know, engineering, the school where they have engineering, we've got our engineers there. We've got business people. We've got finance people working in it. It's just, I think they're going to find the same positive return to them as I've found in participating, and others, I think, have found just that good feeling that we're accomplishing something. As many times we work down here, and you feel like we just have plowed the same ground again and again and again, and we haven't moved it very far. But my participation in this task force, and I think Pat would go along with me on this, we actually, from month to month, see things changing, see ideas going... Coming to fruition, good things between the two bodies. And so I'm... It's been a real honor to serve on it and work on it and participate. And the benefits have been probably more to me than they have to the school board because I've enjoyed it so much, the participation. But it's a good deal.
Larry, did you have a comment?
Yeah, just an overall comment. Thank you for your report. Thank you, Pat, and you, Pete, for participating in this. And I hear you saying that you feel that there's been some significant accomplishments made that maybe have not gotten out to the public through a good, positive PR. I hope when we have our joint meeting that you'll be able to articulate some of those specifics so that we can get on the same level of enthusiasm that you are. Because you mentioned, what I heard you say is that you have a vision ahead that you expect to perform at a 30% increase on some of the key measurements that you're talking about. And that would be very, very encouraging to have that as a goal. And I'd be interested, when you have our workshop together, how have you done up to this point on some of the accomplishments so that we know just what's going on?
Thank you for your enthusiasm, and thank you for the hope that you bring.
Thank you, and we'll make sure you are provided with that kind of true academic progress information.
And Skip, you have some comments?
Yes. Madam Chairman, I would like to also acknowledge the fact that being personally involved in a couple of the schools that's in Ward 7, and one in particular is Edwards Elementary School. The partnership relationships that you reference to, having an opportunity to be at the school and be a part of some of the programs there this past summer. It's amazing to see the level of energy from the students and also from the parents' involvement, from not only parents, but grandparents. To see that when someone else walks in to participate in the educational enrichment of those children and the school as a whole, it definitely makes a difference in reference to the leadership of the school, the students, the participation of the parents. And it makes it a much greater environment for learning. And the children are just really amazed to see other individuals walk into the school and participate in any program that they have. And so I would just like to say that I think that the... Echoing what Councilman Ryan stated, that in some of those individual situations where the school is getting the partnerships from, you know, some of the major corporations and some of the citizens in the community, that it should be a story told that I don't think gets, you know, elevated enough in reference to the PR of the school. So... But your leadership has been amazing. You and Dr. Springer, and in reference to what I have witnessed as relates to some of the individual schools, is, as Pete stated, it's unheard of that what this city has witnessed in the past. And we hope that the continuation of that will be much greater. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Kelly. May I, Madam Chair, mention, because Councilman Ryan did mention a story to be told. Through the work of your communication folk, our communication folk, we have devised additional access to Channel 20. We're encouraging that each council person, team with their school board member, do an interview, talk about the district. We're finding ways, and very soon, hopefully, we'll stream, at least stream online, our school board meetings, record them for later playback to make sure that the public is well aware of some of the challenges before us, but some of the successes as well as that our district is experiencing. We believe that if we empower people who know best what our children need, starting with teachers and our building principals, give them the ability to make decisions, implement those decisions, that they will feel greater responsibility, and that our job will simply be to hold them accountable. So the words of the day are empowerment, responsibility, and accountability.
Angela, could I, just before we finish, ask you to talk a little bit about Teach for America? We've got 50 amazing young people in our schools.
We have 50 young people who are, most of whom are alternatively certified. I want to quickly say that because a lot of people believe that some of these young people are not certified teachers. But they're science people, math people, people who went to college and performed at some of our best universities across the country and in Oklahoma, who never really thought about teaching, but realized this was a wonderful opportunity through Teach for America to utilize their skill, their knowledge, their desire to make a difference in a kid's life, and come into a classroom. So we employ 50, we actually got 52 last year, who are in our elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools. We just renewed that contract this year. We will be bringing into play another 20-plus or so Teach for America. I want to call them students because they're young, but they are teachers. So we're bringing more into our district this year. They bring enthusiasm, they bring knowledge, they bring a connection with students that we hope will, in essence, infect the buildings within...
we hope will, in essence, infect the buildings within which they work, and that they will inspire others who maybe are not so enthusiastic to understand that we really can make a difference in children's lives. So Teach for America, we're looking at, just as the councilmen ask about results, we're looking at the actual performance measures, classroom by classroom, where our Teach for America teachers have been placed, to compare those with traditional teachers. We want to make sure that we know that it's effective, like any of our initiatives, and we want to make sure that we can learn from the kinds of things that Teach for America teaches their students, their students.
Thank you. They've been so enthusiastic and so excited about being in this community that's welcomed them. So thank you.
Thank you all, thank you very much.
Can I ask you one question real quick? Obesity is the fastest rising public health epidemic in the history of the United States. Sometime next year, we'll surpass Mississippi to lead the country, both in Oklahoma City and Oklahoma. And it's clear that that battle is really won or lost with children. And so I'm curious, what ideas, if any, are being bounced around on the school board? I know you have an election today for District Four. I'm glad in that election to be hearing that debated and talked about. They've talked about the partnership between the city and the school board, like in Denver, where they'll have like a centralized kitchen, a one area that then disperses healthy food to many different schools from one central location instead of trying to update the cafeterias and...
We have eighty-six buildings, and you know the square mileage. So a centralized...
Or multiple.
We have equipment in all of our schools to prepare food. One thing, and I think this is more than a year old, one of the first things we talked about, we do not have deep fry cookers in any of our buildings. All of our meals are considered sound in accordance to U.S. Department of Agriculture standards. The challenge is to make sure we get our kids to eat that food. So there is still yet work to be done. When I was growing up, you know, eating in the cafeteria was part of the highlights of the day. I mean, the food was really good. The one difference was that the food was actually prepared from scratch in the building. That's the greatest challenge. Our cafeterias do not technically prepare, cook, create food. They warm it up. It's actually pre-prepared, in the literal sense, pre, prior to stashing in the oven, prepared meals. So we do have challenges to ensure that our students eat well and eat wise while they're in our buildings. But we also have the challenge of physical activity. But the real answer to the childhood obesity problem cannot be solved by the school district. Clearly, it is a community issue. It is an issue that requires access to healthy meals and healthy food when a child is at home in their neighborhoods, not convenient store food, but real, as my kids describe, real food. It requires access to physical activities, whether it's walking trails, safe biking, physical activity outside. It requires that parents become more aware of how the implications of health in terms of a child's obesity. And it does mean, whenever we start talking about obesity, I want to close my jacket, it requires that we all change lifestyles. So we are engaging in partnerships because we know we can't do it by ourselves with our Eat Wise organization. We have a pilot program right now in several of our schools to see what it would take to actually begin to really prepare food on that, in that local campus, in that school's cafeteria, and not bring already food in that needs simply to be warmed. So we're trying some things. We're working with city-county, Oklahoma City County Health Department. We're working, of course, with Fit Kids, with the Institute of Child Advocacy, other organizations who have the same interests as we in terms of their kids' health and well-being, so that we can utilize those who do it better. We can utilize that expertise and that knowledge inside of our buildings, and then we can make sure that our students have an opportunity outside of our buildings to participate in healthy behaviors.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And again, Happy Valentine's Day. Councilman Ryan, Councilman White, and to all of you, thank you very much. I appreciate these two gentlemen who take their time and energy. The manager shows up. Thank you, Mr. Manager, for your participation, and all of the outstanding staff of the city of Oklahoma City. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much for coming down, Angela. Appreciate your work. Okay, I think we now need to convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, and we have one item on the agenda.
Move in a second.
All those in favor? Item passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
Move in a second.
And are there individual considerations?
H.
Pat, I'll be disappointed if I don't have a list.
No, it's okay.
It's okay, really. All righty. Skip, do you want to go ahead then with item H?
Vice Mayor, this matter came before our committee, and it's involving a rehab loan under the housing program of the city of Oklahoma City, in which there was a $26,459.16 loan made to the applicant and ultimately was the recipient of the funds. Precisely two years after the loan was made, the matter was presented to staff that the recipient was no longer able to make the payments due to the fact that she had some issues in reference to the quality of the environment in the home that was causing some medical concerns that she felt like it was a direct result of the house itself. The project, the residence was put up for sale, and of course, based upon the praiseworthy of the property and the payoff from the loan, the owner was basically upside down. And in an effort to try to resolve this matter, they made an offer to the staff for forgiveness of the note. And I believe the original offer was like, was it a hundred and fifty dollars or a thousand dollars on the original offer for the forgiveness?
The mortgage payment was a hundred and fifty-eight dollars about. It was, the original mortgage was $26,459.
And the original offer for forgiveness to...
Was a hundred dollars, and then she decided that she could come up with $3,600 as a settlement offer.
Okay. And the point that I would like to make in reference to this is that although we have it on the agenda today for approval with, under this resolution to approve this, I don't want anyone to be misled or to think that this is a precedent that the city of Oklahoma City has established as it relates to these type of serious housing program loans that so many people have been able to benefit from and has made a difference in the quality of their life, the quality of their children's life. And these funds come through the city of Oklahoma City, through the federal government. But although we have reached an understanding under this one particular set of circumstances that the committee, Councilman Ryan, Councilman Schied, and myself, that we ultimately agreed that it would probably be in the best interest of the city to get some refund of these funds as opposed to nothing at all if the matter was to not, if we didn't work out some type of compromise.
And get a second qualified applicant to take over that property.
Right. Because ultimately, if the property went into foreclosure, then we have a second...
It was vandalized, gotten destroyed. And then at least this way, it won't be a vacant property. It will be occupied by a qualified applicant.
Right. But on the balance, as it relates to the loan, I think there would approximately be a balance of $19,000 that he'll be owed to the city of Oklahoma City under the original payment plan. As opposed to someone thinking that this is just something that, you know, you will never have to acknowledge as an indebtedness, we will be providing a $10.99 for $19,000.
That is correct. If the loan was forgiven, we'll receive a $10.99 to consider it a claim against them.
Right, okay. And hopefully, in the future, that, you know, this will be something that we will take and use as a, you know, a reason to look at a different policy as we go forth in the future to not have...
That's right. We do everything we can to make as many good loans as we can, but that's what the program was designed to do, is have those last four to it.
Right. And so, Bob, I want to thank you for all the assistance that you have provided our committee in reference to this matter, as we had to come to a very difficult decision. But under the circumstances, this was an individual that had some very unique issues that we took into consideration, and we took it very serious, but just didn't want, you know, this to pass today as if like this is a precedent that the city has or anyone else could come through this process and expect to do the same thing, and that this individual will receive a $19,000 $10.99 for reporting purposes to the federal government.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This really is not anything unusual. It happens over day in the real estate market right now. I mean, it's like a short sale. She's selling the property, but she can't get as much as is owed on it, and people are deciding to accept what they can get. It's a common practice in the mortgage industry right now, so it's not...
The reason it's a little bit of a bitter pill is that we're second on the note. So Bank of America gets a hundred percent. They get their, all hundred percent of their $50,000 back. Taxpayers get ten percent of their money back.
But whoever, whomever is second is in that situation in the mortgage business. It happens, I mean, literally, it happens every day in the mortgage business. Somebody takes less, and the person who gets paid.
When Skip's talking about looking at the policy, it's when we come in second, what, are there any protections that we can get for the taxpayers?
There's very few of these loans that we do as general loans. Most of them are senior loans that are deferred and forgiven after ten years. This is a situation where we do, a small portion of our loans are made to individuals that are income qualified, but they're not a senior loan. So we do a general loan, which is an interest-free loan, to try to eliminate blighted structures in the city.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on the consent docket?
V. V.
V?
V is a request for proposals on the use of the Armory on 44th Street. It's in Councilor Salyer's Ward, but I've been involved in it to some extent because one of the proposals was, that has been made. It's an interesting building. I toured the building recently. It's an interesting building. I mean, in terms of its capacity, it's probably got more utility than most people think. You just drive by, you don't realize what all is inside it. Hopefully, we can find somebody that either wants to buy it or puts it to some good public purpose, like a school would be, or the Integris approach is the one I'm most familiar with, and Integris is proposing to put a free clinic there. Obviously, there's something in it for them besides a free clinic. They'd like to relieve some of the pressure on their emergency room so they can, emergency room can start to operate again as an emergency room as opposed to a healthcare clinic. It would be a great location. The demographics of the area lend itself very well, I think, to being a free clinic. But I'm going to be interested and see what the proposals look like when they come back because either use is going to be really something positive for South Oklahoma City.
Councilman McAtee?
Yeah, sometimes I have a vision, sometimes I have a nightmare. This may be a nightmare. One of the things I hope somebody picks up on with this property, this would be also an ideal location for a senior wellness center, would it not, Jim?
It would.
But it has great challenges, do it. So if there's anybody out there that wants to operate a senior wellness center, here's some property you might want to consider.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on the consent docket? I believe we have a first, a motion and a second, so cast your votes. All of you, thank you very much. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the concurrents docket. I believe we have twenty-eight items that seem to be fairly evenly split between the Water Utilities Trust and MAPS for Kids.
Move in a second.
Any comments or questions on the concurrents docket?
Just might point out, there's sixteen change orders on there, and that may seem like a lot, but we've got nearly thirty schools under construction at this point in time, and there's just a lot going on right now. And just a quick update on MAPS for Kids. We're down to four middle schools, one elementary school, and the admin building are the last remaining MAPS for Kids projects to go, and the four middle schools should be built, will be bid out this spring. So we're making very good progress.
The projects that we have under construction right now, when do we anticipate all those projects to be completed?
Well, the projects that I talked about, the nearly thirty, are all the way from just about being done to just started. Your general construction period on those is about eighteen months. So, you know, in about eighteen months, those projects, the new ones will be done, some are about new, and they're pretty evenly spaced throughout the different stages of construction.
Is there any work being done on the site location search for the new administration building?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the concurrents docket. Please cast your votes. The motion passes unanimously. Moving to item eight, which are items requiring separate votes. Item eight A is an ordinance on final hearing recommending some changes in a couple of PUDs and SPEDs united into one to PUB 1452, and this is in Ward Two. Ed, would you like to comment about this?
I think we're at resolution. This has to do with how many restaurants are going to be in the Klassen curve, and I think we've, there's been discussion between Chesapeake and the neighborhoods. They're in agreement. I believe I talked with Rob Roffield last night. The restaurants are going to be confined to one building, is that...
Well, the additional restaurants that would be allowed would be in the building just north of the south building with the building that's adjacent to Klassen. There is existing restaurants, and Tim will be showing you this right here.
These are existing.
Yeah, that's what we agreed to limit the, any new restaurants to that building, so...
So I think everybody's happy, and I think we're ready to move forward.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Move it for vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please, do we have a quorum? Are we ready to go? Okay. Cast your votes, and the motion passes unanimously. Item eight two also relates to the same area, Ed, in Ward Two, and I believe it's related to a parking garage.
This is on the Chesapeake campus, and just to bring it into compliance with the surrounding zoning, I think there's no protests, and we're ready to vote on that as well.
Okay.
Move it.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Item eight B is an ordinance on final hearing, and this is the ordinance that was introduced two weeks ago. We heard it for public hearing last week. On final hearing today, and Larry, this was the ordinance you introduced with related to nuisance code?
Yes, I'd like to, I see all of them back there. Thank you for your work, sir, and I think Cindy just came in for the legal staff's work on this. One of the aspects of this particular ordinance is that we unfortunately have some folks in the city right now who are operating their businesses out of compliance with the law. And by that, I mean they are offering adult entertainment where they do not have a special permit that's required for such a use, a conditional permit. And so this will give the police and the zoning folks some added emphasis that they can use to get those folks into conformity. So I hope you will support it. There are other things that go on as far as the alcohol that is bringing, getting, I guess, in keeping with state law. That's the main interest that I have, is just to put a curb to these illegal activities going on on a regular basis. So I'd like to move for approval.
Second, all ready? First, a motion and a second have been made. Cast your votes, please, and the motion passes.
And then I'd like to move for the emergency.
All ready? Cast your votes on the emergency, and that passes as well. Thank you, Larry. Item eight C... Item eight C is also an ordinance on final hearing, and this related to the winter period consumption base for sewers and sewage disposal.
Right, and this is again the third time we've seen this, and in the past, we've kind of after the fact decided which months to use, and this will formally set those months for future years.
Great. Is there a second? Already? Please cast your votes, and that motion passes as well. Item eight D are a series of ordinances related to parking issues, and I think each of these specifically relates to a project under development at between 13th, 12th and 13th and Walker and Dewey called The Edge. May we vote on all of these at once, or do I have to do each one separately? Already? So item eight D one removes no parking Monday through Friday on the east side of Dewey between 12th and 13th Street. Second? Already? Cast your votes. That motion passes. Item eight D two removes no parking anytime on the west side of North Walker between 12th and 13th Street. Second? That motion passes. Removing the two-hour, item three is removing the two-hour parking metered control on the north side of Northwest 12th between Dewey and Walker. And that motion passes. Item eight D four establishes angle-in or 45-degree inset public parking on the west side of North Walker between 12th and 13th Street. Second? And that motion passes. And finally, item eight D five establishes one reserved parking space for the physically disabled on the west side of North Walker between 13th, on the south of Northwest 13th Street.
Question, is there any kind of a regulation that governs number of handicapped parking places that have to be, you know, any like this?
Yes, there are. There's ADA requirements that that we need to come to.
And this is compliant with the ADA requirement?
I don't know that offhand, Mr. Ryan. I assume that was considered as part of the approval process.
I wondered myself if one was sufficient.
It seemed like a small number.
There are code requirements for disabled parking spaces, so this would be in should be in compliance with the code.
Thank you, because it seems like that's a, you know, it's you think it's a small issue until you have to take advantage of it, then it becomes a much bigger issue.
Right. And I do want to
My guess would be this is we're just dealing with the city street here. This is that's not going to be all the handicap spaces that will be inside the development itself.
I'm sure that's right. There's a parking garage, but it's it's a combination there.
You're saying there's no requirement that the city provide handicapped parking?
Pat, as I read the material provided with this, all of this parking is being privately funded by the developer. This is just planning to help facilitate the private development of the parking spaces that are on-street inset parking. I think we need to vote on item five. Second? And that item also passes. Moving on to eight E, this is a public hearing regarding an ordinance relating to motor vehicles and traffic, amending chapter 32 of the municipal code. And do we have someone here to speak to this? I believe we do have two people here that would like to to speak to this subject. Carl Gaskins. And I think Carl, while you're coming forward, I think this is an item that we had heard some time ago.
It was introduced last week regarding the ordinance to help regulate taxicabs.
Good morning, Carl. We will need your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Carl Gaskins. I live at 1424 Northwest 28th Street, Oklahoma City.
Thank you.
Okay, the the chapter 32 part of this isn't where I have so much concern. It's where it extends into chapter 56, and they're wanting to change 5660B and or I guess add that. And it's wanting to restrict the parking of taxicabs. Now, taxicabs are, I think the main issue is the private vehicles of most cab drivers. And even when we're off duty, we still have to use these vehicles for whatever business we need to do. This restriction of no parking at meters is huge. Like right now, I'm parked at a meter. I came to this meeting. To make it so that I could never park my cab at a meter in the downtown and Bricktown area would restrict me from, you know, normal stuff when I'm off duty. I think that part of the solution for this would be not necessarily having a blanket ban on parking at meters by taxicabs, but possibly if the police department has certain meters, certain metered areas that are a problem, they've got something that they need to facilitate there, we could identify certain little sections of no parking for taxicabs. It still leaves everything else open.
I see the chief here. Chief, do you want to come up? And it seems to me that when we talked about this a number of months ago, we did discuss the issue of drivers that have only one vehicle and need to do personal business.
Well, when it was originally proposed, that issue came up, if you recall, and legal looked at it, we looked at it, discussed the issue, tried to figure out a way to accommodate that, and there's really not any way to accommodate that and identify for public, you know, for private use. I mean, it's just, it would be too, it would be too difficult to enforce, too difficult to prove if somebody is using, you know, has a private vehicle and use it for, you know, for personal business. You know, the thing to consider, this applies to the downtown and Bricktown area. That's the only place it applies to. So if it's a meter anyplace other than the downtown and Bricktown area, they can still park there as long as they plug the meter like everybody else. If you're in the downtown area, there's plenty of, there's plenty of private parking, parking garages, parking space. You know, we require the officers to park in the garage if they're going to court, not on the metered parking, even though it's legal to do that. So there are options there if they need to do business downtown, parking other than just meters. And it would be just too difficult otherwise. You know, I think somebody talked about issuing them a placard or something to show it's private, but to do that, you could end up issuing everybody one. Everybody could request one. You could end up issuing everybody one, then we'd be back to square one where they'd be parking on meters and we wouldn't be able to prove otherwise whether or not they're doing business or not. So it would be just very difficult to do something like that.
So Carl, even downtown, there is an option to park, you know, in a parking garage or while you're doing business.
Yeah, you go on Bricktown at night, you know, parking space, $10 in the private parking, where everyone else can park at a spot on the street at a meter for free. Okay? It's I think it's just too restrictive. Like I said, if there's an area, a section along the street where there's been a problem, the police department has a problem with that, they could very easily have a sign put up that says, "No taxis, no taxis parking here." That wouldn't be the big blanket that covers everything. It'd be just be more more focused.
Well, it sounds to me as if we are pretty focused in downtown and Bricktown, and it doesn't cover citywide.
Well, that's where the meters are, downtown and Bricktown. And it's like I say, like here today, I don't know where I could park other than at meters, especially with the construction. There's nothing close by.
All righty. David.
May I say something?
Certainly.
First of all, Mr. Gaskins, I appreciate you coming down. And I brought this up, and apparently that's not a good idea, but I think if you're if if the various taxicab drivers could put together an organization, an association, and when these types of issues are brought before your group, the police and your organization could work to find some solution other than, you know, allowing the problem to continue on. So while this may be a very difficult decision from your standpoint, perhaps it'll provide the incentive for your various members or cab drivers to band together and form an organization and, in a sense, become somewhat self-controlling over issues like this. You know, when it's when a problem has has been identified where taxicabs are parking in parking meters that would otherwise be served or be used by individuals, private individuals, and then once they see a police officer or a traffic control vehicle coming their way, they then leave, that's a problem. And to say that it's not a problem, I just don't think we're being honest. But if your group, if the various drivers could get together and find solutions, I think that's probably the best approach to these kinds of issues. But I think Chief City has pointed out that when individuals who happen to drive a cab and they that's the only vehicle, so they have to use it for personal purposes, when they do have to come into the downtown or Bricktown area to use the private parking garages, I think is is a an appropriate request, as well as recognizing that taxicabs can now use the areas that were previously designated for the carriages and other areas, you know, at the height of of your use, especially in Bricktown. I think the city has tried to accommodate your group as best it can, but still leave those parking meters available for people who really want to use those.
Well, I see you brought up the carriage stand thing, and that is just a few limited hours, but it also doesn't allow parking. We can stand there, but we have to stay with the vehicle for for business where you have to do something. You know, that's my concern. It isn't that I I want to have to have all the stuff open where we can stay there and work for where we need to park and leave the vehicle. You're severely limiting everything. But as far as the while working hours go on, I think that a bigger part of the problem streamlined at all would be consistent enforcement. We have a cab stand there on Vinscoyl Avenue in Bricktown. More times than not, it has cars parked in it. It's labeled towaway zone. I don't see the vehicles being towed. We're limited on where we can go even during the working hours. I don't know. I just think that to have, like I said, the huge blanket thing, you know, I know it's a bit of concern on Main Street. If we have this ordinance the way it is, it covers that, but if you was to just say no parking at these meters, you still have Main Street covered. Any other place where it's a small area, because I don't believe it's it's a huge problem with all meters, it's just in certain areas where it's been a problem.
Well, Carl, thank you very much for coming down and sharing your comments with us.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Chief. We also have Wes People. Good morning, Wes. We will need your name and address for the record, please.
Wes, Federal 8901 Northwest 83rd Street, Oklahoma City. Currently a taxi driver for Thunder Cab. I want to preface, starting with that, these are just my views of the situation regarding chapter 56, not representing a company or anything like that. First, I do want to commend the council for the action that they took three and a half years ago to change the prior version of chapter 56. A lot has been done in that. We all came to you presenting some issues with that, and you made the changes. Personally, I don't believe that you have made enough. It is a significant improvement, and I do want to thank you for that. Regarding this issue on chapter 56, I'm I'm of the opinion that the situation will resolve itself given over time. And I'll explain that because parking is a major, major problem right now. Driving around downtown is a major problem because of the construction. Ourselves, in taxi stand perspective, we've lost six taxicab spots right now that we have available for use that we cannot use. There are four spots on the south side of Sheridan, just south of the Renaissance Hotel. That street has been dug up, fixed, repaired, dug up, fixed, repaired, three or four times. We have not been allowed to use that stand because right now it's two-lane traffic, and there's it's an impossibility to have a taxi stand there. The Devon Building obviously has also contributed to that with all the rerouting of the streets. I don't know. My estimation would be 20 to 30 metered parking places that existed prior to the construction of the Devon Building are no longer there. I'm assuming that when all the construction is completed within the next year, that those spots will be back in the place, and I believe that will resolve the 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 issue, create a few more metered parking spots. Like I said, right now, we also do not have a taxi stand at the bus station that we've had, again, because of the construction going on. What I believe will happen, I'm one of those that let the market do take its course, what I believe will happen, when the Devon Building is constructed is finished, when the streets are completed, we will have an additional 12 taxi stands that will have the six that we've lost, plus my understanding is we're going to have four to six around the Devon, the new Devon Building. That will relieve the stress that you currently see now on Main Street. Right now, we only have eight taxi stand spots downtown that we can use. Six of them are on Main Street, two of them are on Broadway, directly in front of the Skirvin, Broadway and Park. That's it for the downtown area. Again, we have six that we supposed to be able to use, but we haven't been able to use because of the construction. What I believe is going to happen is when the Devon Building's completed, the cabs are going to spread out. Right now, the only option we have to park is on Main Street. Okay? We bring in approximately 300 people every week, fly in on Sunday night, Monday, come in, take a cab downtown, and on Thursday and Friday, they leave, go back to their home, and then they come back the following Sunday. That's 300 people. Right now, we have eight taxi stands to service those 300 people that leave on Thursday and Friday. My observation is that's when the issue is regarding parking, particularly on Main, happens is it's on Thursday and Friday when everybody leaves. Okay? In about a month, we're going to have 15,000 people coming in prepaid legal, biggest convention of the year. We have eight taxi stands right now that we can use. Eight stands versus 15,000 people. What's happened, and again, in my opinion, is because of the circumstances that we all don't like, the circumstances have caused us to go in and back up on Main Street. When those road construction and everything is resolved, you're not a taxicab driver is not going to want to park on Main Street sitting ninth or 10th in line when they can go over and park at the new Devon taxi stand, or they can go over and park on the Renaissance stand, or they can go over to the Skirvin stand. Right now, our only option is Main Street. That's it. And that's why I believe we have a problem. My recommendation to the council is that you table this until all the construction is done, let the market take its course, reevaluate it in a year, and see what happens if we need to make changes then. So I just don't think it makes sense to make it right now, given we don't know what the facts are going to be in six or nine months.
Thank you very much for coming down and sharing your comments with us.
Any questions?
Comments or questions from the council?
Well, excuse me. I I really am concerned for all these drivers. I think it's it's impacting their business, and I'm surprised with the few number of spaces that they currently have available. So is there a way that we could look, even if it's a matter of putting temporary hoods on the meters to designate them strictly for cab stands until we can address the problem on a more permanent nature?
Yeah, I mean, we can we can look at that and work with work with traffic to determine whether or not there needs to be some temporary parking for taxis. I mean, I assume we could look at that legally. We'll just have to do some checking on that. As far as as far as looking at the issue, I mean, I agree. As as the city grows, downtown continues to change and Bricktown changes, we'll have to continue to reevaluate, but adding the parking spaces that we have now and doubling the taxi cab spaces, I think it's going to do nothing but benefit. And we've discussed this with the taxi cab companies, and they agree, they like the idea of the carriage carriage parking. I'm not saying at some point we need we're not we're not going to continue to reevaluate this and add parking or move some of the taxi parking, but it's just something as the city grows we're going to have to do.
Is it just too complicated? I mean, if you look at days of the weeks or specific times, I mean, as he's indicating, it's it's specific days and time, can you make, can you have different schedules or different?
Well, that's what we've done with the taxi with the carriage areas, is specific times from 12:30 to 3:00, when the when the carriages aren't operating, but the clubs are letting out and they need that service. That was one of the original complaints in the Bricktown area, is that there weren't spots available as the clubs let out, people that really need to use the taxis and don't need to be driving their vehicles, we need to make those available, and that that space was freed up for that. So those are the types of things, I mean, you do have to look at, and you do have to look at days of the week and things like that, but there's never going to be a perfect system. You know, you can't you can't put enough spaces there to accommodate everything at one particular time, such as a a specific convention. I mean, you are going to have times where it's going to be more difficult, but it's the cab business has become very, very competitive, and those spots are going to be first come, first served, and it actually doubles the number of spaces. This this ordinance doubles the number of spaces for taxicabs, both in the downtown and Bricktown area.
Thank you very much, Chief.
I would like to see, I mean, other than just us talking, if if some effort could be made with the could be made with the traffic division to look at alternatives, to provide more spaces for the cabs, especially during the construction period, and if we could be a little bit flexible, especially when conventions do occur downtown, to make some kind of accommodations to allow more spaces for cabs. I just think that makes us more attractive from a location standpoint for conventions to consider coming downtown, and then helps these drivers, and everybody wins, to me, it seems like.
Our, our special events units will be glad to talk to them. I mean, we, we discussed this issue with them, and I, I'll just caution you, there'll never be enough taxi cab spots, never, so, at any one time, so.
Just like there's never enough on-street parking downtown Oklahoma.
Right. That's, it's just always going to be an issue.
Well, I was just going to say that, that, and I'm, while I'm somewhat sympathetic to their cause, for every meter you hood and, and reserve for a taxi, you're taking that meter out of service with the cramped stuff downtown for a citizen to park at. So, you're almost going to be setting one against the other, as it stands right now, because I've had a lot of the business people downtown complain because we've taken their meters away from them during construction.
Well, I agree, but maybe we could just focus on, you know, whoever's doing all this construction and get on to them to hurry up, to eliminate this problem.
You're, you're not wrong, Councilman, and, and one of the issues that's out there is that we have added several hundred parking spaces, on-street parking spaces in downtown Oklahoma City with, with the 180 construction. However, they're not metered at this point in time. Until you go down there, they're filled with pickup trucks of people doing construction work downtown. And one of the reasons we don't have the, our meters in to regulate that better is we had a protest on the meters, if you recall, which, which shrugged that out for several months. And so, we're in the process of finalizing that contract, in which case we will have meters down there, which will provide turnovers for those hundreds, literally hundreds of parking spaces in that area down there, which I think will be an aid to, to this, this problem. And I, I know the, the question is, well, when are those parking meters going to be in? I don't know the answer to that today, but I do know we're working hard on that, and that we're trying to get that contract finalized.
May I, may I say something to, to respond to that? That is why I believe the best action is to wait for the construction to happen. I really believe, we, I believe we have enough spots right now when all the construction is done. Right now, we're just locked because of the construction. We can't, I mean, that's, that's nobody's fault. I suggest, I think it'll solve itself out. As soon as everything opens up, then the, the cabs will be moving around, because again, no one's going to want to wait in a metered spot when they can go and park in a, in a taxi spot in another location. So, I, I just think that's the best recommendation.
Thank you very much for your thought and time.
I will.
I just did want to say that we'll need to look at the code sections on hooding of meters to see whether or not there's flexibility to do that or not, unless Cindy or Jill knows the answer to that question right now, but we will have to look at the code section on that.
Okay. All right. Are we ready to vote?
We need a motion.
I need a motion to approve?
Move it down.
Okay, I think we have somebody else, another citizen, to speak. May I take, you have a second before she comes up? A second, thank you very much. And ma'am, I'll need your yellow piece of paper up here, and I'll need your name and address for the record.
My name is Tawana Valencia. I'm one of the owners of A1 Taxi. And I've been looking at this problem now, not only here, but in other towns. You know, what do other towns do, especially when they have these major influxes, thousands of people that, that emerge on the town, and it's a short time, so, you know, it's hard to put something in permanent for things that happen, you know, you have a week here and you have a week here. As in other towns, you know, they make special provisions for that time. It's just something that happens at that time, every time. It's a set thing. When this comes up, this is what we do. As in Norman, on the football games, and you have thousands of people influx on that small town, and they have certain streets that they close off because they know traffic is heavy through there. I don't see why something like that can't work on a larger scale here. When you have, take prepaid legal, which is huge down here, you're going to have thousands of people, literally, you know, when these meetings let out and stuff, they're sitting there and they're wanting a taxi. They need to go to lunch, and they only have a set time because they got to be back in there. And they don't drive. They come in, they fly in, they get cabs, they come downtown, they go to hotels. We take them in, we pull them out. I know down in the office, we schedule heavy on just dispatch, just someone to answer the phone, because we get such a major influx of calls coming in and people needing taxis. And I think this is a problem. We're going to keep coming across every time until we figure out some way to take care of these people when they come into our town, you know, because the biggest complaint I hear is, you know, we can't get anywhere down there. We, we can't get a taxi. They can't get in close enough to us. We have to have them walk, you know, forever, and they don't know our city. So, when you're trying to explain to them how to get to an area where we can get to them, they, they have nothing to, to get back on and look and say, well, do I go this way? Do I go that way? They, they're lost, and they're confused, and I hear so many of them say it, that it's just very, well, they, they just don't say very nice things about it, you know. So, we just really need to find a way to make the tours, to make the people that come to conventions in our town feel like we're taking care of them, like they're going to get service. They can get service here. And that's the biggest complaints I hear from people every time they call, you know. So, maybe we could look at, I like the idea of a task force, you know. I've been looking into, wanting to do something like that for a couple of years with the Limo Taxi Association, because they have those in other parts of the country, and they work real well where you have a bigger voice, a bigger leg to stand on. But I really think we need to look at these things. I do agree that once the construction is done, I think it'll level out, but I think we're always going to have the same problem when it comes down to these conventions, these huge things that are going on down here, that we're going to have to find a, a way to provide for these people. Thank you.
Sounds to me like a lot of that is, is business planning on your behalf and creating ways, stacking your cars in certain places. I mean, I think there are a lot of things that can be addressed from a, an individual business model standpoint that, that isn't the city's responsibility.
This is true, and we are addressing that, but we also need to work together, because we're hindered by what we can do down here, just with, like, with the parking we're trying to get around. Right now, the city, I mean, I, I left an hour, almost two hours early, and I was still circling trying to find a parking, place to park, and had to park almost a half a mile away. So, I mean, it, it's, it's very hard right now, but yet, life doesn't stop just because we're doing construction. These people are still going to unload on this city, and we're still going to have to take care of them, and we want it to be a pleasant experience, not something they go home and say, Lord, don't go to Oklahoma City.
Thank you very much for coming and trying to help us with some creative solutions. I really appreciate it. Okay, I think we have a motion and a second. Are we all ready to vote? Cast your votes, please, and that ordinance passes with one dissent. Moving on to item 8F. These are, this is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures and a resolution to squaring them dilapidated, and we do have someone to speak about this. Stuart Nahr, thank you. Stuart, while you're coming forward, did you send me an email the other day?
I did not.
Did you not? Okay. I, I got something about this building, and I was unable to retrieve it. And which item is it that you're here to speak about?
Item 8F-1A, I believe, 622 North.
622 North Broadway?
North Broadway.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. I am Stuart Nahr. Good morning, Madam Vice Mayor and members of the council. I represent Forward Motion LLC, the owner of the property at 622 North Broadway. It's also known as 620 North Broadway. It's the Hale photo building. We're here to request continuance for one month to the next city council meeting. I'd advise the council that we have a contract for purchase of the property. The property is scheduled to close on March 3rd. We're in the final stages of the due diligence phase. I do have the potential purchaser, a representative potential purchaser here as well. You know, our goal is not to delay. Our goal is to try and close the sale, and then also have the new purchasers either renovate or, or correct the deficiencies or do whatever is necessary in order to make it productive again. The goal for everyone is to retain the building. Obviously, you know, we could scrape it off and have a plot there of dirt, but the goal is, is to try and, and rehab it and restore it and retain the historical nature of it.
Who is Forward Motion LLC?
Who is it? It is an LLC formed by the Hales.
Great. So, the ownership of the building hasn't changed?
Well, we, we changed the ownership of the building when we did the purchase contract because we, with the sale proceeds, we're going to do a 1031 tax exchange, IRS tax exchange, and we needed an LLC in order to facilitate that vehicle. We, we didn't do that in order to delay or to do anything else. Matter of fact, the deed we filed reflected, you know, documentary stamps exemption, that it went from a family member to a family LLC. So, we, we did that for purposes of a 1031 exchange. Our goal at the time, when this offer came about, was to do a joint venture and proceed with the renovation of the building. We're in the process of drawing plans. The offer was presented to us, and at that time, we decided to go that route as opposed to doing the joint venture that the, the Hales were going to undertake. So, we didn't, when we formed the LLC, it was to enter into the real estate purchase contract and also to facilitate a 1031 exchange when it's sold.
From this seat, it feels a little bit like a delaying tactic, and we, we did give you 60 days when this was originally on, and I haven't seen a single thing that has been done to the building since.
Well, I, I think that, that there has been work done on the building as far as structural engineers, the due diligence aspect of it, and like I said, we were, we were pursuing One Avenue, 1st of January, and when this offer came in, the, the purchasers then are undertaking those. I, I think they're making applications for grants. They're looking into tax credits for this deal. I, I don't think this, you know, I understand it looks bad with respect to creation of the LLC, but there was a specific business purpose for doing that.
And the closing date on the contract is?
March 3rd, 2012.
Okay. Staff, do you have a recommendation? Because I'm, I'm feeling inclined to leave this on as long as you'll continue to work and keep a dialogue with them.
If you choose to leave it on, we can work with the current owners and when the new owners take over also.
Okay. Does anybody else have any thoughts? My, my recommendation at this point is that we leave it on and make sure that the work progresses as it needs to. The ceiling is still on the floor of the building, and it's in disastrous shape.
Correct, but you know, the, the outside four walls and the two-story of it, it is secure. I understand that the roof has collapsed, and that's a big part of what the issue is in trying to retain it instead of scraping it off. You know, ultimately, with the downtown renovation and things like that, we would like the art deco nature of the building to stay there. We believe that's a big, big aspect in trying to save the building, and that's.
Well, it is, and, and as I've said earlier from this horse shoe, it's a jewel of a building, and we don't want to lose it, but we don't have a lot of mechanism in which to be able to save it. And unfortunately, this is just coming on the heels of a trip I just returned from, from in Havana, and I've seen an awful lot of crumbling structures in the last eight days, and.
And again, our, our goal is, is to communicate dialogue. We're not trying to, to create any issues for the council, and if it looks bad, you know, there was, there was a business purpose for what we were doing. The, the owners, the potential new owners here, you know, they intend on, the goal at this time is to renovate it pending, you know, the completion of the due diligence, and, you know, with them purchasing the property on the 3rd, if we declare this dilapidated today, although that gives us 30 days to tear it down or fix the problem, that cuts their timeframe down considerably if the sale goes through.
With the assurance that our staff in this body will continue to work with you as long as progress is moving forward, which we do on a regular basis, we're going to go ahead and leave it on today.
Okay, meaning?
Meaning it will be declared dilapidated, and there's a 30-day clock ticking, but our staff will work with you, and as long as progress is being made, and as long as that, you're moving forward with a sale, we're delighted to work with you, and we're delighted to work with a new owner to save the building. That is the goal of this process.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do, did we have a motion and a second on item 8F? Second? Cast your votes, please, and the motion passes. Item 8G is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures, and we have a number of those. Does anybody here to speak on any of the unsecured structures?
Move it down.
Second? Cast your votes, please, and those items pass. Item 8H is a revocable right-of-way permit for the wonderful spring Red Bud Classic. Is there someone here to speak about the event? Hi, why don't you come on forward, give us your name and address for the record, and tell us a little bit about the Red Bud?
My name is Patty Anthony. I live at 1708 Bedford Drive, Oklahoma City. I'm the race director for the Red Bud Classic. We're very excited that we'll be celebrating our 30th year this year, and our two-day event commences with a bike tours on Saturday, 10:33 and 50, and we have a kids' run at noon, and we pause on the pond at night at the Waterford Bellinis around the pond, and then Sunday are, are running events. We have a five, a 10K, and a two-mile walk. Anyway, we've been working with the city as we do each year, and we, we're granted a revocable permit for right-of-way use of 63rd in Pennsylvania. Anyway.
It's a wonderful run, and it's mostly in Ford, too. Would you like to make a motion?
You know, I have a question. It's a great project. I was a volunteer in Red Bud years and years ago, but I'm a little concerned about the impact on traffic. It's, the people who've lived around there for a long time know that there's traffic interruption going to be there, and they plan alternate routes. However, we do have a lot of newcomers in Oklahoma City, and will there be a, a effort to, like, put an announcement in the newspaper that indicates alternate routes these streets are?
Yes, we take, take great strides in communicating to the local neighborhoods. We send out letters to all the Nichols Hills residents. We also send out letters, we hand-deliver letters to all the people in Glenbrook and the Wowmans that this event is coming up. We give them maps. We tell them when the roads will be restricted. I work with Major Hill, and he is wonderful, in trying to keep those roads open as much as possible. We're very aware of, you know, the residents trying to get here and there during the event.
Because I've had calls from the church of 63rd in Pennsylvania already about getting the church a timely fashion.
Yes, yes, and I, we also know, in fact, I, I talk to the churches. I give them the dates a year ahead so they don't plan any big activities at All Souls, Christ the King, or United Methodist of Nichols Hills.
The churches and the residents are well aware of the process.
They are well aware.
The thing that concerns me are those people who don't live in those areas who use those streets.
Yeah, well, we could put something in the newspaper.
I think if we could have some kind of a public announcement, either on the television or newspaper, that there, these streets will be closed and suggest some alternatives, it might be helpful to get people around on those days.
We'd be happy to do that.
It's a great event. I'm not criticizing your event at all, but there's been several instances in Oklahoma City in the last year or so where events have caused disruption in traffic, and my goal is to try to eliminate or minimize the disruption.
Well, and we also do do digital signs on 63rd two weeks prior to the event, announcing that these streets will be restricted on those, those days. So, we do, we do that, but we can for sure put a notice in the newspaper.
Anything you can do to make the public aware, I would appreciate it.
I, we will do so. Thank you.
Is that a second, Pat? All right. Cast your votes, please, and the permit passes unanimously. Thank you, Patty. We really, it's a great event. Item 8I is executive session, and I understand we do need to put a session?
Yes.
Cast your vote. Item is moved. Item 8J, I understand we do not need executive session.
Correct. We're going to strike this item and bring it back at a later time.
All righty, so do we need to?
Yes.
Motion to strike.
Motion to strike.
Second, and that passes unanimously. Item 8K, I understand, again, we do need executive session?
Yes, please.
All righty. Okay, so that's moved to executive session. Item 8L, our claimed, one, our claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here to speak on any claim that's been recommended for denial? Seeing none? Second, cast your votes. Those motion, that motion passes. Item 9 is items from council, and item A is actually an ordinance to be introduced today that addresses some concerns that some of our citizens have had, particularly surrounding new construction of high-rise buildings in and around the downtown area in some of our design districts that will all have balconies that will face the street. And so, there was some concern about. that will face the street. And so there was some concern about what might be placed on those balconies, and what kinds of ways we might address what can and can't be placed on a balcony that would face the street. And so, Dan, do you want to just let us know a little bit about what your team has done?
Well, what we've done is looked at some other cities, particularly Dallas's ordinance, and then we also have a provision similar to this in the Paseo ordinance that limits the type of materials that can be placed out in the front porches and rear yards. The idea is that to eliminate materials that are not outdoor-resistant, that deteriorate when exposed to the elements and become unsightly and that sort of thing.
Perfect. So we really have defined a little bit more clearly that a balcony can have outdoor-appropriate furniture, vinyl or wood that's been treated to be outdoors, and cannot have stored-on-it items that would traditionally be indoor furniture, more affectionately known as the barcalounger ordinance.
That's correct.
Give me an example of what you're talking about. I'm really struggling with this.
That is what we're talking about. We've had a lot of citizens worried that people might put a barcalounger out on their balcony that would sit out there and is not an appropriate piece of furniture to be on an outside balcony.
It'd be something like couches, and as Meg Staller said, chairs that are not designed for outdoor use, and when they're exposed to the elements over a period of time, deteriorate rapidly and present an unsightly, you know, situation on those balconies.
Would this ordinance only apply to balconies?
Yes, that's.
So if on my front porch, I could still have my barcalounger?
Most of the new construction downtown, this is only applies in the downtown design review districts, and there aren't a lot of single-family residences there. The primarily new development are multi-story residential, so they're basically, there aren't probably a lot of situations where it would apply to front yards or rear yards.
Well, I'm having a little trouble with this ordinance as its chief there. It seems like it's a little intrusive, and I understand we've got standards to maintain, but tell people what kind of furniture they can or cannot have on their balcony. It seems like it's a step further than I'd like to see us go, but I need to do some.
There are an awful lot of communities around the country that have.
That's fine. There's a lot of communities in Russia that will shoot people for doing things. We don't want to do that either. So I think those, what other communities do can be helpful, but I think we need to do what fits the culture and our community to the extent that we can tolerate it. And I just need some thinking about this particular.
And this is not, this is not just furniture, right? I mean, you can't put a refrigerator out there, for example.
Correct.
So it's, okay.
I mean, this is an attempt at defining how to keep that space from becoming a backyard storage dump. I mean, it essentially is, it was self-described by the developer of the Edge Apartments, that these are people's backyards.
But why don't the apartment managers and owners put in regulations and rules that they can enforce? And that way, somebody who moves in there knows what the rules are.
Pat, we actually, we've spoken with the developer about that specifically, and we're trying to work with him about incorporating.
The developers ought to turn to the city to have their problem solved. I think we've got other things to do. And I just, to me, this is a little bit intrusive on personal choices. A refrigerator on a, I have a personal refrigerator on their patio to keep soft drinks, soft drinks available for the people outside, and they're not able to do that on balconies. It seems like it's just, we're being a little bit intrusive, and that's my concern. I want to make sure that I can.
Does it just applies downtown? Is that right? Doesn't it apply to Nine Founders Tower or any other buildings like that, where people might live in?
Just in the downtown design.
It doesn't today. It doesn't today.
I assume you're trying, and I'm trying to be facetious here, but I assume you're trying to not have the clotheslines go across the street like you see in Europe all the time. But getting back to the serious note, my concern was the word "used." So I can't pull a dining room chair out there if I'm having a party and sit? I mean, how do you define "used"?
I think it was just an isolated incident like that, and you moved it back in, you'd be fine. It's one that's out there all the time, and you're given notice, people be given notice by the inspectors to remove it, and they don't do it, and then that would be the position at the time when we issued citations.
This really was brought forward by neighbors who are particularly concerned about the increasing numbers of high-rise structures around their neighborhoods with balconies on them. And my thinking about making it slightly broader than just one project-specific was that we're going to see more and more of this kind of development. And if we start a thought process that says, you know, your balcony isn't an outdoor storage bin, we're taking some baby steps to try to prevent that.
And if you do approve this today, you're just referring it, introducing it and referring it to the planning commission to let them look at it.
Larry.
A quick question. I don't know whether it's legal or not. Can you have a grill on a balcony in a high-rise from a fire standpoint? Is that legal? And if so, does this?
Yeah, I'm not sure, yeah.
Assuming it's not a fire hazard, Mr. McDee, I think the answer would be is a grill like that is designed and intended for outdoor use, so it would be allowed.
So it'd be allowed. If I had a bicycle and wanted to keep my bicycle out there for some reason, would that be allowed? I just see some unintended consequences here.
I asked that specific question, Mr. McDee, and I was told yes because that would be for outside, outdoor use.
Okay.
Bicycles are made to ride in all types of weather, so.
I mean, this isn't easy, and it does lend itself to lots of sort of amusing commentary, but it is a real fear on behalf of lots of the neighbors that this is going to be a problem that we need to try to address somehow. So today, as we said, we're just looking at moving it on to the planning commission for them to study. Second? Okay. Everybody cast their votes, please. Thank you. And it passes to move on to the planning commission. Items from council. Pat, can we start down at your end?
I just continue with my sort of grouchy mood this morning. I'd like to ask the city manager if he would remind city employees who have access and drive vehicles that are identified as city vehicles, that they are typically going to be held to a slightly higher standard by other drivers. And a lot of people's impression of "the city" in quotations will be derived from how city employees act in the field behind the wheel of city-owned, identified vehicles. I'd like to ask the city manager to maybe reinforce the idea that these people need to be particularly sensitive to traffic laws.
I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
I agree.
David? Nothing today? Pete?
I just want to personally thank the governor and the attorney general for the action they took last week with regard to the filing of the McCarran Amendment matter in the, in Oklahoma Supreme Court concerning the water thing. I think that's a very positive step. It alleviates a lot of concern I've had about where this could ultimately go. I think it's in the right place. I'm looking forward to a solution during my lifetime.
Hey, Larry.
Let's just like to invite all the neighbors in Windsor Hills to their neighborhood meeting this coming Saturday at 10:00 AM at the theater up in the shopping center. Hope a large crowd comes out, and look forward to seeing them there. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Larry.
I also want to invite, again, the Public Health Forum this Thursday night from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. Health Fair from 5:30 to 7:00. This is at the Northwest Expressway Marriott across from Integris Hospital. I'm grateful to the YMCA, who's donated a 10-day membership for anybody who just, just come in the door, and you've got a 10-day membership to the YMCA. A very distinguished panel of speakers, and I think it's going to be an excellent meeting. I want to express some concern about, there's been quite a bit of dialogue and concern, I think, from the public about the bicentennial park here at the Civic Center. I have a laundry list of concerns. I know the downtown design review committee is going to meet this Thursday at 9:30, and the issue will be discussed. The last DDRC meeting was uncomfortable to read in the media about how our planning and public works departments are kind of, we're going at each other. I don't know how this schism compares historically, but I know that it's too wide for my comfort. The, this, this area in front of the Civic Center, this park, is not just a historical center, it's the historical center. It's the epicenter of the city's history. There's a tremendous amount of, I think, reverence that needs, that is deserved towards that history. I'm just not understanding the decision-making of Project 180 and kind of the priorities. Project 180 is, of course, different than your normal TIF. You have ad valorem taxes from the Devon Tower, but you also have sales tax revenue that would go to the general fund, but is being redirected towards this TIF. And then you have 2007 bond funds that are going, and all these funds are being managed by the Devon Implementation Committee, who has certain priorities. And I, those priorities haven't really been explained to me. I read about them in the paper. I hear that things, for example, that E.K. Gaylord just, you have to have priorities. E.K. Gaylord wasn't. And we have other priorities, and apparently bicentennial park is one of them. Nobody, no public works official, no planning, no counselor, no journalist, nobody's been able to explain to me why completely revamping the Civic Center bicentennial park is necessary at this time, is a priority at this time, takes a higher priority over what I would consider economic development, infrastructure issues. I can give you good reasons why we could address E.K. Gaylord, even if you don't want to do the whole E.K. Gaylord, just the pedestrian walkways at Sheridan and Reno. I can give you good reasons why we need to address one-way traffic between Robert S. Kerr and Sixth. You don't want to have, as was talked about in the media this week, you don't want to have two-way traffic, and then one-way traffic, and then two-way traffic. And right now, we don't have the funds for Hudson. We don't know exactly how we're going to address the driveway from the county's parking garage on Hudson. Those, to me, are infrastructure issues. They're economic development issues. We have people that want to come to downtown. To me, that's a higher priority, is getting downtown ready for business. Prioritizing a $5 million revamping of bicentennial park at this time doesn't make sense to me. I think whatever plan you have is going to fail because you don't have the rooftops, you don't have the people. That's what makes the park successful. We've spent tens of millions on Marion Gardens renovation for that park. We have a $130 million park as part of Maps 3. I'm not, just not understanding why this is a higher priority than some of our other infrastructure projects. I don't understand the nature of the design, frankly. I don't, I think it was on today's agenda, and then it got removed at the last minute, but we're going to spend an additional $160,000 in architectural fees on top of what we've already paid. We, for basically ripping out, we've, we've given the architect a blank slate. We're just ripping out everything, every historic, all the monuments, the oldest, biggest trees in downtown. We're just going to remove and replace with sticks. We're going to, you know, this is how this architect has worked with Chesapeake. They just gave him a blank slate. Why we have to have a blank slate in bicentennial park makes absolutely no sense to me, when I don't think we have the rooftops or the people to support it. I don't, the initial plans to me are just, I don't like it. I don't, I haven't met anybody or talked to anybody who really likes them. A fountain with granite steps and water and children, I mean, my kids, they're all less than 10, they know what happens when you mix granite steps and water and children. They don't understand the multi-million dollar lawsuits against the city that would come. But they understand that heads are going to be cracked open and teeth lost, and it's just, just bad design. The passive design doesn't make sense to me. The lack of public input doesn't make sense to me. Just the complete disregard and irreverence to our history and to our, the contributions of previous civic leaders doesn't make sense to me. So we'll address it at the DDRC on Thursday. I, I just have to say, I have to break formation. I can't vote for another $160,000 in architectural fees. I don't think I can vote for anything like this bicentennial park design, and I won't be voting for it. But that's, that's, if anybody else has a comment about that, I.
Your Honor, I'd like to comment that I, and too, have received a number of calls from constituents questioning what we're doing in bicentennial park. And so I think maybe this is enough of inquiries and concern that we need to slow this process down to make sure what we're doing is correct. Councilor Sheed's brought some, you know, interesting comments about the monuments we have down there, the big trees that we may be sacrificing. And so I think that whatever we do there needs to be thought out very carefully, because we have a valuable asset, and we have a lot of public interest in it.
If I could respond to a couple things along those lines. The redo of bicentennial park and the Mary Gardens Park were agreed upon as part of the Devon implementation plan done when we, on the redevelopment agreement with Devon. Those are some of the criteria that was established at that point in time, and that was agreed to at that point in time. The plans are in place. The funds for this are coming from the TIF dollars, aren't GO bond dollars in this particular project, and there is a private donation that's also being added to that to fund a couple of additional improvements. It's about $3.5 million, somewhere along that line, for the improvements that are in the park. We did have a stakeholders' group that worked on the design for multiple months on it. It has been to the Devon Implementation Committee. It will go to the Economic Development Trust meeting. It has been to the Downtown Design Review Committee once. It will be going to the Downtown Design Review Committee a second time. One of the problems that happened with the Downtown Design Review Committee is we got lost in the weeds because we were talking about a lot of elements that were built, bid out as an alternate that aren't going to be built. And that was, that was where we spent a lot of time. That was unfortunate. And there was, I think, a lack of coordination between planning and public works. That's unfortunate. We're going to try to remedy that because it's not anymore comfortable for me, Mr. Sheed, than it is for you as we go forward in that area. That being said, again, it'll be going to the DDRC tomorrow. We are trying to find sensitive and responsible places to relocate a few of the features in the park. Most of the issues, I think, have been worked out, but we'll find out through the DDRC. The council does, it will be coming back to the council for contract award on the 21st. Mr. Ryan suggested we, the latter, slow play, or don't, don't, not slow play, he didn't use that word, but to carefully go forward. And I, you know, I don't have a problem with that at all. There is a celebration plan for the 75-year birthday of the Civic Center, and it was hoped that that would be done in time for that. But that, you know, that's a decision for the council to make as we go forward. And so that, that's just a factor, as well as a multiple factors that we deal with projects as we go forward.
A question, Jim, on the, this is, project does not impact the park, alleged park around the city hall.
Yeah, that's correct.
This project is essentially for the wall back to the Civic.
Yeah, it was designed and built, and we don't, it's, we don't have the funds to do that. So we're not doing around City Hall. It's only on the west side of Walker at this time.
Good, because I think City Hall Park has a valuable, has a valuable use in that it allows children who visit the art museum a place to burn off the reds, energy they got there.
And if there were proposed changes, that wouldn't have changed, Mr. Ryan, but those are not funded at this time.
And what's the schedule now for the bicentennial park?
Well, bicentennial park, as, as could be, you know, I don't know what's going to happen at the DDRC on Thursday, but if it is approved at the DDRC, then it would come to the council for contract award a week from today on the 21st.
And the other question I have is on the maintenance of the park, when it's put into effect, whatever design is taken. The maintenance of that park then will be responsible to our city park department.
That's correct.
And I don't, I think they do a great job, and I think their resources are stretched to the limit.
I agree with that.
And so anything we put in here, I think ought to be as low maintenance as we can possibly get in order to reduce the burden, additional burden that we're placing on our park department.
And we agree with that, and the parks department was involved, and Wendell's sitting here, and I said, parks department was involved as a stakeholder in the design of the project.
Jim, I hate to bore you to point, but just to help me understand some of the things. On Thursday of this week, the DDRC, which is the Downtown Design Review Committee?
Yes.
Will be discussing the design attributes, for want of a better word, of bicentennial park. That meeting will be an open meeting?
Yes.
So any citizen who has a particular idea or concern or question can attend that meeting, and that meeting will be held at what time?
I think it's 9:30 in these chambers for the DDRC meeting.
9:30 right there?
Yes, sir.
If they decide to approve the design, then that approved design goes where and eventually ends up here? Where does it go next?
Well, it's got two more stops. One's at the Economic Development Trust for its contract award, and one's at the city council for its contract award. I think both of those are anticipated next week.
Okay, when it goes to the Economic Development Trust under Mr. Ryan's leadership, will that trust also be looking at the? will that trust also be looking at the design attributes?
Uh, the-
Or will they just be looking at the, of the details of the contract?
I, I think they have broad authority and, and can do what they choose to do.
We've had, we've had one presentation, uh, on the-
You did when I went out to bid?
I mean-
When I went out to bid?
Yep.
Yes.
And it was, uh, there were some questions there, but we were given the idea, the impression, at least I took the impression, that was a preliminary, and there would be some fine tuning, and obviously, that's what's going on now. So, I would guess that when it comes back to the Economic Development Committee, I guess, I would request that they make a presentation on the design, that we have a feel for what is final, maybe the final design of-
That won't be a problem.
Okay, thank you.
And then that, that trust meeting will be held next week, if, if the schedule adheres to?
I believe we have a-
The 22nd.
The 22nd.
And that meeting also is a public meeting, so citizens could come and make a present, could answer, ask questions or voice their concerns as a, as a result of the presentation that's made to the Chairman Ryan's group?
That's correct.
Which I happen to sit on also, so I'm not trying to beg. If that then passes the Economic Development Trust, it comes to this body right here at some point in time for approval.
I was going to, guys, it'll come to council on 28th. I said this-
Council's on the 21st, Economic Development Trust is on the 22nd. The Economic Development Trust will actually consider the item after the City Council, but we'd be looking for their input before we would proceed. So it's on the 22nd at 2:00 P.M. is the trust meeting.
Okay, I, I made this statement before. Uh, the, the normal chain of, of events is supposed to be, the item comes before the Economic Development Trust, the trust looks at it and then passes that item to council. And you've got the, the cart before the horse, in my opinion, there. And that's just a personal, uh, opinion of mine, that uh-
One of the issues that we're wrestling slightly with is we already took bids on the park. You know, there was, uh, there was the first DDRC meeting that several of the questions were asked, and it's been rescheduled. But we're up against a state law for a 45-day award of the construction contract, which is why we're actually considering going out of order in this case. But the intent would not be to proceed until the trust took action.
And we didn't want to go to the trust before the DDRC had seen it, but we need to try to get it into that window for the 45 days, and so that's why there's a special meeting of the, of the, of the, uh, Economic Development Trust. But you are not incorrect, sir, we did reverse the order on that.
But there are, the, the basic, the only basic fact is for, for, for people who have not been involved up till now, there are a number of public meetings where their voices can be heard.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey Pete, I think you had a question or-
Yes. Um, you know, I, you know, I'm gonna, we're gonna have to vote on this, uh, the 21st? Is that the, the idea? I mean, I haven't seen it. I mean, it's a pretty important thing. I mean, I haven't seen a rendering of what they're, we're talking about. My best information comes from the media, and, uh, I, I share what, what Pat has. I haven't had a constituent contact me and tell me they thought it was a good idea. Everybody I've had contact me said, "What are you doing? Why, why would you do that? Why?" Um, I can start with just the, the, and I, and I'm not, the idea you're going to find a sensitive place to put a statue of Stanley Draper, who is probably the father of economic development in the city of Oklahoma City, I don't know how sensitive you're going to find a place better than the one he's already in. I mean, if we've got somebody that ought to be revered in this city for what we've done, it's Stanley Draper. I mean, that, he's the man that was there with his hand on the, on the wheel for 50 years in this city that moved us forward. I can't imagine a more sensitive, using Jim's word, place for him to be located unless it's right in front of City Hall, unless it's out here in this park. Um-
Pete.
I, I, I've just, I, I don't understand why we would be asked to vote on it, again, as, as, as Larry says, why would be asked, we would be asked to vote on it before? You know, emergencies are not created by somebody else's problems. I mean, they're created, just because somebody declares it an emergency doesn't mean it is an emergency. I, I mean, I feel that way about the emergency clause. By that, we've been voting, we vote for it too often, in my opinion, but, but the idea that I'm going to have to vote on it, it's a week. If you gave it to me today, I don't have an opportunity to really vet it with my constituents. If you gave it to me this minute, I don't have that time. And from what I'm hearing, I, I'm probably not going to like it.
Gary.
Well, I just want to be honest about it. I mean-
And we always appreciate that, Pete.
Right.
I do, anyway. I was going to bring this up, um, outside of the horseshoe, but, but I'm, I'm decided I'm going to weigh into this conversation because I, I think, from what I'm hearing from people, and my own personal opinion is, you've got a park that sits between two WPA, uh, era buildings. This is not a part, place to put a modern, modernistic park. Uh, it's just not. And, uh, I, I don't know what, I haven't seen, I'm like Pete, I haven't seen the design. I've, I've heard comments about it, and I've heard things going on about it, and the fact that the, all of the monuments and the statues and everything that's in there was just going to be gone, but nobody knows yet where they're going. Uh, I, uh, I suspect, Mr. Wood, Pendleton Woods is here probably, because I worked with him on the last redesign of the Bicentennial Park, and a lot of time was spent on where are we going to move those things that are in there, not get rid of them, how are we going to better present them. Um, I'd be very hard-pressed to vote yes on something for this park if it has that, that, what I'm going to call the modernistic look to it. If it's not a park that complements these two WPA-era buildings here in the city. You can do modern parks elsewhere. You can do, you can talk about the new things you want to do downtown and how you want to revitalize and all that kind of stuff, but there are parts of this town that need to remain historical and have that perspective about it, and I think this park is one of them. Uh, and if, if they, if anybody headed that design team, I'd be real curious to know who the stakeholders were in this meeting, because I can't imagine anybody that's got a whole lot of, uh, history with the park itself or these two buildings thought that that was a good idea. But be that as it may. But the other thing I want to touch on, and I've heard it twice in this conversation, was, um, timing and the Devon Implementation Committee. And I, I'm just about to reach my, my, um, end of my patience level with the fact that we need to rush through all of these projects because there's some time that you need to get them done. We're already behind on the streets because of the extra work that's been involved in them, but yet we're not slowing down, thinking that we still have some timeline that needs to happen for the entire 180 concept. I think the citizens would like for us to say, "You know, you probably ought to finish something before you start the next one." And, uh, whether it be the streetscapes, or the streets themselves, or this park, uh, we're investing a lot of money in these things, and I think that the, the, the concept that we need to rush them through because some committee wants them, or some entity wants them, or for some event to happen, is not doing the citizens a service it needs for what this thing is going to end up being in the end, and so that 20 years from now, we can say, "Well, you know, it's not really what we wanted, but we needed to get it done by a certain timeline," and so we, we rush through the thing. So, my, my patience with this rushing through and the implementation and all of those things is starting to wear real thin. And I certainly, on the park itself, uh, I'm going to go on record as saying, I can't, I won't support anything that doesn't protect and revitalize the historical aspect of that park between these two buildings.
I don't, I don't have a problem at all with, with lengthening any timeframe to go forward. We don't do things sequential. If we do things sequential and wait for this to happen, to this to happen, to this happen, our, our construction process would be very lengthy. So we do things, uh, at the same time. We do things concurrently as we do this. We did, one of those things we did concurrently was the DDRC review process at the same time we're doing the bidding process. And again, by doing it that way, we shorten a month or two out of, out of the process. But we do that a, a lot, because if we just wait for approval to approve approval of the construction process, because of our internal processes take a long time. And so we do a lot of concurrent. This one didn't happen. So if we need to now stop and say, "Okay, wait a minute, we're moving too fast. Let's take a look at this," I don't have a problem with that at all. I do not want the council to be in a position of feeling that this is being rushed through, through that. Yes, because of the time schedule we did line out, the folks at the Civic Center are planning a celebration, would like, like that accomplished before the 75th anniversary, because it appeared at the time that we'd be able to accommodate that timeframe. If that's not possible, so be it. We'll, we'll, we'll stop and work, work through this process to make that work out. We don't want to have the perception that we're rushing something through this, but the fact of the matter is, on all our processes, we're doing a lot of concurrent steps on these processes. And sometimes, it, when something happens, like the DDRC deferred it for a month, then all of a sudden, we, we get out of, out of kilter a little bit. I'm not saying any of that's bad. You know, it's just that we, we, we just can't, if we, if we stop and, and do everything in a sequential order, it takes a really long time to get things done. Most of the time, when we're doing things concurrently, it works. This time, we got a glitch. Okay, let's stop. Take a look at our hold cards and, and see what we need to do to, to, to do the, you know, the proper public involvement as we, as we go forward. That's fine.
In view of what you just said, would there be any serious impact if we delayed it, to come to the council till the 28th, for instance? That would give us time at the, give us an opportunity for at least one more public input?
Yeah. The, the thing we have on this is because of the bid is out there. Now, we're going to have to get a, a, an agreement, because the contractor is not obligated to hold his bid for more than 45 days, so we'll have to get a, a, but that's okay. We can, we can throw the bid out there. There are things we can do to make this, this happen, Mr. Ryan. We can, we can go to, try to accommodate that. But the reason we're trying to do that is because we're trying to hold the legal requirements of that 45-day bid.
Yeah.
We will go back to the, to the, to the contractor and see if he'll hold that bid for another 14 days, or whatever, whatever we need to do to, to accommodate that.
We've done that before, in my recollection.
We have done that, this time, since the past.
I just want to, I just want to go back to the process, and, and that is that, for, for me, and this echoes everything that Gary's saying, it, this should have come out of planning. I don't think planning would have, planning would have, uh, given weight to everything Gary was saying about, about the historical nature. You never would have seen fluorescent spinning top thing, coming out of, of planning. And I, and I don't really understand why, you know, that, that's what was embarrassing about the last DDRC, is that we've got, our planning hasn't even seen these fluorescent spinning top things. I mean, that, that's just, to me, our planning, the, the planning department should have, should have instituted the design. Uh, I, I don't understand what we've bid out. I mean, we haven't approved the design, so what, what did-
The, the, the design was approved in, uh, when? Eric helped me out around the time.
You know, if we, if we look at the entire process and we talk about the stakeholders and we talk about the project itself, this one really didn't follow anything much different than we do on a typical construction job. There was actually a preliminary report that came to the City Council last May that had the basics of all the design elements that we're talking about today. It didn't include the spinning towers. It didn't include a lot of the additional items that were bid as add alternates, but the basics of the design, the grand lawn, the stage, all of those elements were actually in that preliminary report. And that came out of a stakeholder process. It included a lot of our downtown membership. Um, it included various directors of some of our city departments. It included other staff and citizens. Um, so we felt like we were doing the right thing, bringing that to you at that time. Agreed, there were some alternates that weren't considered as a part of that stakeholder process. And there was some, some input that was received, and those were designed as add alternates to be considered individually. The spinning towers is not being recommended. The improvements of the City Hall lawn, which also includes the arch, aren't being considered either at this time. And I think those were the two biggest challenges that we received probably from the community as a part of the design, but those are not being recommended.
Yeah, the civic, the, the redo of this, of the City Hall Fountain was, was an issue, and that is not part of it either, at this time.
So the only item that we're actually considering at this time is just the Bicentennial Park itself, all improvements that are west of Walker Avenue. Um, and it's, and it's really the basic design form with, with two of the alternates being recommended, which are some pavilions, and then also some of the signage that is on the frontage. One of those is existing today, and there's the opportunity to enhance that sign and, and create some additional opportunities. But I would like to just suggest that, I mean, there was a report that came that we looked at, and now we can change it, we can modify that, but there has been a process in the last year for the park.
Eric, how much have we spent already on architectural fees?
I would need to go back and look at that. I know that the question is about the, the $160,000 amendment that is, has been prepared for future consideration. The amendment was for the alternates, and predominantly, the alternates too, which are being privately funded, we have received funds and have a donation agreement for nearly $600,000 for that $160,000 investment. So we'd like to bring those to you as a package item, having the architect's amendment be approved for the additional work that they perform for the alternates, but the, but the, but the advantage is, is that we have a $600,000 donation agreement, um, to offset that cost.
So we're going to pay $160,000 in extra architectural fees for things like the spinning tops?
No. Two pavilions and the two signs that are not being awarded as a part of the base design.
Well, but the, but the architectural fee for, for design beyond that. Mr. Sheed is right.
Yes. There are extra fees for those items, yes.
I, I would just encourage every, I've, I've talked to a couple of people who, very prominent in the community, who just think there's no point in going to the DDRC on Thursday, that the decisions are already been made, nobody cares what I have to say. Please don't do that. Please come on Thursday at 9:30. Please, uh, chime in, those of you who have urban planning experience, who have opinions. Please come on Thursday and, and don't give up on the process, and, and give your input.
May I take this opportunity to call forward a very distinguished gentleman that's been waiting through this discussion? Penn Woods is here to share some of his thoughts about it. So Penn, would you like to come address the council? I'm sorry, okay.
The thing that brought me up here today, the thing that brought me up here today was, uh, reading the paper about, uh, the remodeling of the, uh, of this, the park between the City Hall and the, um, Civic Center Music Hall. I was reading about that, and so my, my concern was the, uh, Bicentennial Plaza, which has been here, in fact, for a number of years. It's just called the Bicentennial Park, you know, it's, uh, but, uh, I, I, so I called to find out what was going to happen, and I found out, they, I was told that it was being moved, and that's the thing that brought me here. I made arrangements with, I'm excited to come here today to, to talk about that. However, one thing that, uh, I'm, when I arrived here, I met Eric Weiner, and, uh, we, we talked about it, and I learned some things that, uh, that mean that I will not call for a vote or not ask for a vote today because of, uh, that they were, you know, that the, uh, that they were, the Arts, uh, Arts Commission was going to meet, and that they were talking about the other, because I thought on art was that, uh, the Bicentennial Plaza is two things. One is that it's, it's art, it's art called carved into, you know, granite. You can just imagine what it takes to carve art into granite, the way they were done, and then each one of them is identified with the, with what it is. They all deal with early Oklahoma City, and, um, I was going to pass around, I made copies, and we'll pass them around, just to, to point out the things they told about early Oklahoma City. The, uh, oh, just hand that, hand, hand me one. Yes. You can pass them around. But, uh, the, um, you can just imagine what it takes an artist to be able to cut into, uh, this Oklahoma red granite, the, the pictures that are, that are cut into that. It just, uh, really fits art, but it also fits history and fits early Oklahoma City history. You notice that, uh, most of you have probably been down there at some time, and you realize that the first illustration, uh, was, showed Oklahoma City with, uh, the, the day of the run when it was all tent cities. And then the second one was one that shows the, uh, uh, the two Oklahoma cities, you know, there was North Oklahoma, they called them Oklahoma, the word "city" didn't come in until 1923. But, uh, the first was North Oklahoma, and the other was South Oklahoma, were, uh, breaking apart at what was then called, uh, Clark Street and later Grand, and now Sheridan. But, uh, there were two cities at that time, Oklahoma, North Oklahoma and South Oklahoma, because the, the reason was that when the, uh, federal government, uh, created the land run, or called for the land run, they said, "There's a city, it could be only a certain size," and that reason it was the two, two cities, North Oklahoma and South Oklahoma. But that time, it was a, an aerial picture showing what it looked like at the end of 1989. Now, in the third one, they had the, uh, uh, they had the first and the second post offices in Oklahoma City. The first one was simply like a, uh, just, uh, like a wooden shack, and the second one was the, uh, first floor of the large, first multi-story Masonry Building in Oklahoma City, which is located about where Bank First is today, but was a two-story building, and had the post office on the first floor, and it was dedicated on, uh, July the 4th of, uh, 1890. And then we had Delmar Garden, and it was, was the next one. All beautiful drawings cut into, um, into red granite. The, the third was a, uh, drawing of the, of the poster that came about- The third was a drawing of the poster that came about, which said, "Vote for Oklahoma City for State Capitol in 1910." That was when they were voting between, before, two years after Seaside, but it was when they were voting between Gussery, Shawnee and Oklahoma City. And then the next one was the first airport in Oklahoma City, which is loaded about where Capitol Hill High School is now. The third is the, the next one was the first oil well discovery in Oklahoma City area. And the third was the old cotton gin that used to be on right, right south of Reno Street. And then the next one was the first commercial church, the first, not commercial, the first church in Oklahoma City that was built, which was the first, was the first Methodist church, wooden building then, but still located in that same location. And then the last was a facial picture of an American Indian showing, telling the story about the role of the Indian in Oklahoma, title in Oklahoma. But I met Eric Weiner when we came here and he was telling me about the, that the arts commission is working on the thing which may arrange to move some of these things, you know, and so forth. And so he suggested, and I certainly agree to the fact that I could meet with him, be a part of that group, where we would make sure that this would be located along with art, because it's two things. It's both art and it's history. And so I will be going to there, but I'd like for you all to know the importance of this because it deals with both art and history and it's a very, very, really a tremendous thing because it tells early Oklahoma City. So we're concerned that it be in a place where people will see it and where people will get an appreciation for the early part of Oklahoma City. So instead of asking for a vote here, I'm going to meet with him and we will be talking about it and others who are interested, Bob Blackburn, for example, who's out of the Oklahoma History Center, he called me and was talking about it, you know, and other people have talked about the importance of the bicentennial plaza and the importance of it being in a place where it's very noticeable because it tells the story of early Oklahoma City. So each of you all, if you haven't been by there recently, just go by there and read it because it really tells an early story of Oklahoma City. But I appreciate being with you all and I appreciate you all knowing the importance of the bicentennial plaza being located in a place where the people of Oklahoma City will have the opportunity to see it and to read it and to learn about some of the early things in this city.
Penn, thank you so very much for coming down. We're really grateful. I'm so happy to see you today.
Yes.
Thank you for coming and sharing your concerns and I know that Dr. Blackburn has spoken with you and I know that Eric will be sure to include you as these conversations move forward.
Well, thank you very much.
Very much.
Your honor, may I ask a question? I'm sorry, I don't wanna belabor this, but the discussion that we've had this morning does lead to a question on my part, and it is, again, the process. Do these design review committees, whether it's the downtown, the brick town, the midtown, do, are they supervised or approved as far as their decisions by the planning commission?
No. They're independent from the planning commission. They're provided, they're staffed by the planning department.
Okay.
They provide analysis of the designs and such by the planning department.
Okay, well, not in this case, because we've already had a great discussion this morning and I agree with what's already been said, but in two instances, one's brick town, one's midtown, I've heard concerns that this design committee tends to overstep its authority beyond what the planning commission might do or say or suggest. And I don't think that's appropriate. If they want to, I mean, I understand the importance of having a specific committee looking at designs for these three areas, and I welcome their input, I think it's very But yet, we've got a planning commission for a reason. It seems to me, and I may just be uninformed, don't know that, can't see the big picture, that their recommendation should go to the planning commission and then go to the council. Just in my limited thinking. So anyway, I just wanted to bring that concern up and see what we can do going forward to address that.
I do think you've got two pretty specific disciplines in there, design and planning, and you probably want both sets of eyes.
Well, I agree. That's what I'm saying. If the design committee's recommendations would then go to the planning commission and then after that go to the city council, I think that's probably the best of both worlds because you're getting as much input as possible, but yet you're always starting with the design committee. But again, I've heard two instances and I'd be happy to visit with the appropriate people on situations where they may have overstepped their, what I thought would be their normal authority. Thank you.
Gary, I skipped over you with comments from council. Did you have something else or we insert anything else already? Then moving on, item 10 is city manager reports.
We did have the presentation from the chairman of the school board this morning and I just may have to answer any questions on the other financial reports.
Any questions with manager? Right, moving on, citizens to be heard and we have one person that's, looks like we have two. You need to bring your form back up again, but the first person that signed up to speak is Joe Sarge Nelson.
You gentlemen, ladies?
Good morning and sir, if you would please, your name and address for the record.
I had came down a few weeks back and I'm not here specifically for that. Two people I wanted to be here to address are not here. One of them had to do with a copy of this document that you all received, and I'm not gonna dwell on that because after tomorrow it's gonna be handled anyway. You will be receiving from me a 16-page packet. It's gonna be in three separate documents. They're gonna be loaded, and I mean loaded. And they're gonna be sent certified mail to each one of you. And they got a lot of dynamite questions in 'em. All of you, I've already got the answers to all of them. I got a little over 1,100, nearly 2,200 pages of illegal stuff going on and I wanna make sure the council is aware of why I'm here. I wanted to let the mayor know the next time when he runs for election, he'll have another man on the ballot with him, and that's gonna be me. And if anybody wants to see my campaign headquarters, they're welcome to do so. And this is not here for a political reason. These documents will be forthcoming to all of you. And I wish you well. This is the first time I got to see in a long, long time. Y'all really get down to business over this last issue. It really impressed me. Been nice of all of them of that way, but they're not. But I'm not here to start problems or create any. I'm just letting you know where I stand and what I do. I'm gonna be here at every one of these meetings from now on and they'll all be actually recorded and not from up there. So any questions y'all have, I'm not hard to find, I'm in the phone book. And I wish you well. And each time I'm here, if you've got something to ask me, feel free to do so.
Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Did I understand that he is, that he announced his run for mayor?
I see.
Is that what he said? Well, somebody needs to tell him he can't come back until after the next mayor's race is over. Because our policy is that if you're running for office, you can't use this as a vehicle for promoting yourself. So sayonara, Sarge.
Yes, ma'am.
We just have a quick question. Okay, concerning this 8E that we were talking about, we don't really have an issue with the chapter 32 things all the way down. Only issue we have is with chapter 56 changes with the parking, which we have asked, you know, to be postponed for, till after the dust settles. Can we petition to separate those two things so that the top one can be approved or denied and the bottom one can be looked at more? And if so, what's the form to do that?
At this point, we went ahead and voted on the items altogether, so they cannot be separated at this point.
They'll be back on the docket next week for final.
Okay, right. So this was the public hearing with regard to those matters and they will be back on the docket next week for final approval. So Kenny, is there some room in between? I don't know, did you hear the question? They're not concerned with the items in 32, but they are concerned with 56.
Yes, they just need to, you just need to come and reiterate your.
Well, I would ask that, let's sit down with you beforehand and let's get, let's get the municipal councilor's office.
That's right. The municipal councilor's office and the representatives from the police department to sit down with you and see if we can work through what your issues are. We're not trying to, we're not trying to be punitive in any ordinances we're trying to pass. We're trying to balance the needs of the citizens and the taxi cab community and other people that are trying to park and balance those uses as we go forward. So let's sit down before next Tuesday.
We'd love to do that at your convenience, anytime.
All you need to do is please get in touch with the municipal councilor's office and we'll try to schedule a meeting.
Okay.
This is a very good example in deference to Councilman Ryan about why we have these public meetings and why our process takes three weeks to go through so that there is an opportunity for input. And if you've got some creative solutions, I know that the office will be excited to share those.
We appreciate it. I will be getting in touch with you. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for coming down again.
We have executive.
Sorry, we have executive session, so we need to go do that and we'll be back.